Can you hear me? Okay.
Okay, Maria, it looks like we are perhaps still missing Mr. Reiner.
He's entering right now.
Okay, I think we're all here. Maria, are we ready to go?
You're ready to go.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Welcome to the September 28th Dublin City Council meeting. In these extraordinary times, we certainly do appreciate the flexibility of these meetings remote. Given the current conditions, we feel it is the safest opportunity to hold these virtual meetings so that the public can be invited in and be heard the fullest extent possible at this time, given the limitations of what our in-person meetings would provide. You can access livestream on the city's website or the City of Dublin's YouTube channel. I suspect you are at one of those locations now if you are hearing my voice. In order to submit any question or comments during the meeting, please use the forum under the streaming video on the city's website. Catherine Carr-Harris, could you please mute your device? So, thank you. So, please, enter your comments in the chat function. It's available there on the website. We want to accommodate public participation in the greatest extent possible. We welcome your comments. All of the business we will be doing here tonight is in fact, public business. If you ask that you refrain from any appropriate comments. This system is certainly imperfect, but we certainly do want to accommodate the best of our ability. It is now time for the pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Homer Rogers to share his screen with the flag and lead us in the pledge.
Okay, I think I'm muted now. Can you hear me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Homer. Okay, we have some special presentations, proclamations this evening. We have Catherine Carr-Harris, the Vice President of Clinical Services from the Adam H Board of Franklin County. So Catherine, welcome this evening, and we look forward to hearing the information that you have for us. So please, take it away.
Thank you. Again, my name is Catherine Carr-Harris, and I am the Vice President of Clinical Services with the Adam H Board here in Franklin County. I've been with the board for nearly 20 years, and it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you very much for giving us this time tonight to talk about something that's very near and dear to my heart. Hopefully, most of you know what Adam H is all about. We are the Alcohol, Drug and Mental Health Board of Franklin County, and we provide addiction and mental health crisis services to anyone in Franklin County. Approximately 85% of the people we serve live below the federal poverty level. You may wonder about our mission. Our mission is to improve the well-being of our community by reducing the incidence of mental health problems and eliminating the abuse of alcohol and other drugs in Franklin County. So, the Adam Board funds 33 provider agencies in the county. You hopefully know Centero, our partner up in Dublin, but we have many other providers throughout the county. Netcare is our premier crisis service provider. Mary Haven provides alcohol and drug treatment. Hopefully, you're aware of the Mary Haven Addiction Stabilization Center, as well as many others throughout the county. Adam funds prevention intervention services in all 16 of the Franklin County Public School Districts. Again, we are here to provide addiction and mental health crisis services to Franklin County. Some of our challenges that we face is that Adam is projecting a $14 million operating deficit due to a rising need for mental health services and because of the current opioid epidemic. Also, suicide deaths in Ohio have increased by 45% over the last decade, and the opioid epidemic has obviously had a profound effect on services that are needed. We expect the population in Franklin County to grow by 8% in the next 10 years, potentially increasing our residents by 100,000 individuals. So, some of our funding needs, more than 71% of Adam's resources comes from our current 2.2 million property tax levy. We have not had a levy millage increase in the last 30 years. Franklin County Board of Commissioners has approved placing a five-year 2.2 renewal levy with a 6.65 mil increase to support Adam on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot. Issue 24, the Adam Levy, will help continue to provide the vital services of Adam H. If passed, homeowners would pay an additional $1.90 per month, or $22.75 more per year per $100,000 in home property value. So, I'm here asking for your support for issue 24 this November, as we are seeking to increase our levy, renew our levy and increase the levy millage to support crisis and mental health and addiction services in Franklin County. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Thank you so much. Does council have any questions? Well, we certainly, oh, I'm sorry, was there a question? Well, we certainly do appreciate your information and certainly wish you the best in upcoming election. And, you know, I think it's important to distribute this information to residents. So, thank you for taking the time to come tonight so that we could get your message out to the citizens of Dublin.
Thank you for your time. If you need, if anyone needs additional information, you can find it at adamlevy, www adam levy dot com. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thanks.
Okay, up next, we have from our own Dublin Arts Council, we have David. There he is. Hello, David, welcome. I understand you have a presentation for us, and then we have have a proclamation for National Arts and Humanities Month. So, please, David, take it away.
Sure. So, let me bring up the presentation. Just go back to the beginning here. Okay, good evening, members of council. Thank you for allowing me to be with you this evening to provide a program update from Dublin Arts Council. On behalf of the entire board and staff, thank you again for your generous approval of funding to help close the gap in Dublin Arts Council's reduced budget. Your support has allowed us to continue to nurture creativity, wellness and connection in Dublin, providing engaging community programming under the slogan, "Art is not canceled." Before the pandemic, Dublin Arts Council began a community art and wellness initiative in collaboration with nine community partners, including the City of Dublin Police, Recreation Services and Parks Departments, working together to explore how the nature of art can nurture personal and community well-being. How could we possibly have anticipated how vitally important this work would become? Dublin Arts Council launched the Connect Public Art and Wellness Challenge this past Saturday, connecting the community to the environment and public art, encouraging people to explore personal wellness and promote community well-being. The Connect launch garnered coverage on NBC4 Television, a front-page Dublin Villager article, the top story on Columbus Underground, a prominent feature on 614 Now, coverage in the Delaware Gazette, City Scene Magazine and Columbus Makes Art. And today, Ohio Magazine suggested Dublin's Public Art and Wellness Challenge as a top thing to do in the state of Ohio. All of this coverage has resulted in a reach of more than 300,000. A large component of Connect is contracting Ohio artists to create work that responds to each of Dublin's 16 River Boxes, which, as you know, are small-scale public artworks inspired by the hobbies of geocaching and letterboxing. A challenge booklet serves as a guide with location clues, wellness activity prompts and resources from community partners. With assistance from the City of Dublin's Parks Operations Staff, artwork installation took place over the last two weeks, providing 16 new works of public art in Dublin's nine parks. The challenge is a tactile approach to discovering and responding to public art. It requires an immersion in nature and an appetite for anticipation and surprise. Activity is intentionally designed to be experienced offline, combating the very real issue of techno-stress, which is the exhaustion, anxiety and depression caused by daily immersion in digital technology. Here's one of the new artworks created by Michelle Stitzline, an artist who works with found and recycled materials. It's now placed in Donegal Cliffs Park and is ready to be discovered. I'll leave the artwork details for you to discover in our challenge booklets, which you can now find around Dublin in art boxes, boxes reminiscent of little libraries, or which can be downloaded from our website. The Connect Public Art and Wellness Challenge allows residents and visitors to connect with public art, nature and wellness in a whole new way. I hope you'll all explore this wonderful project, finding moments of personal discovery and enhanced well-being along the way. Please encourage your family, friends and colleagues to venture out. You may even discover a part of the city you've never experienced before. Details about the participating artists and the project can be found at dublinarts.org/Connect. With this project alone, we've garnered a reach of more than 24,000 on social media. The project has been generously supported by grants from the City of Dublin, Cardinal Health Foundation, the Ohio Arts Council, Puffin Foundation West and the National Endowment for the Arts. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge our other 2019, 2020 corporate supporters who allow us to realize our programming, and they include Amazon, Fifth Third Bank, Hidaka USA, Honda Marysville, IGS Energy, Keeler &amp; Nadler, Kekinen Agency, Kroger, the Metzger Kalif Group, Maury Ull and Galliano, Nationwide, North American Coal Company, PNC, State Bank, UBS and Wendy's. The plant kindness rock garden at DAC continues to grow, providing uplifting messages and a creative outlet for the community. It's heartwarming to see so many families adding their treasures to this collection. We are exploring expanded programming around this project based on requests from Dublin Chamber of Commerce and businesses such as the Dublin Toy Emporium, who want to create their own plant kindness rock gardens, and from PTO members, like those from one of Dublin's newest schools, Abraham Deep Elementary, who want to incorporate the project school-wide. The popular project has been possible due to generous support from Oakland Nurseries and has garnered organic reach of more than 34,000 on social media. Early this summer, Dublin Arts Council convened a team that included City of Dublin Events and Community Engagement Staff, the Greater Columbus Arts Council, Can't Stop Columbus and the Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau to present Dublin curbside concerts. To date, the project has brought over 149 concerts to the community. We will continue the concerts into October, but during September, we are focusing on performances that celebrate our community heroes, those who are going above and beyond during this extraordinary time, including healthcare workers, first responders, teachers and our senior residents. We also continue promoting business recovery by promoting patio concerts to Dublin restaurants. The temporary six-foot gallery Stay Through Paintings Apart project, created with the Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau, has provided compensation and exposure for four Dublin artists while reinforcing a community health and safety initiative. The project garnered exposure from ABC6 Television, 614 Magazine, City Scene Magazine, Columbus Makes Art, Columbus Parent and Ohio Arts Council. The effort netted an estimated 850,000 in traditional media impressions and organic social media reach of more than 20,000. The artists have removed their decals and are keeping them for inclusion in the artifacts created at home exhibition that we are planning for March of 2021, providing a place to display residents' creative responses to the pandemic focusing on art and wellness. DAC Gallery exhibitions have continued, providing much-needed support for visual artists by promoting and encouraging the sale of their work. In-person visits by appointment began in July when Governor Dewine authorized the reopening of art galleries. The exhibitions are supplemented with comprehensive virtual content on our website. Over the next 10 months, the gallery will include artists who reside in or have a close connection to Dublin. The Dublin Arts Council Gallery has once again been named the Best Suburban Arts Gallery by readers of City Scene Magazine, marking the fourth consecutive Best of the Best Award for the only gallery of its kind in Dublin. We have also just confirmed with WOSU Television that the eighth season of the Emmy Award-winning Arts and Culture Series Broad and High will be taping their host segments at Dublin Arts Council during the run of our exhibitions. This will bring awareness of our community's creative culture to audiences all across Ohio each week. Check on your holiday shopping in support of Dublin Arts Council through our first online silent auction, Shop for the Cause, which will take place October 21st through the 25th. When you shop for the cause, you help support our many programs. For everyone in the community who loves our annual garden party, this online event features the ever-popular Silent Auction. You can find registration details on our website, dublinarts.org. The Shop for the Cause fundraiser has been developed in an effort to support our continuing financial need and is a component of Dublin Arts Council's new comprehensive development plan. The plan was created in partnership with Millard Consulting and was accepted by the Dublin Arts Council Board of Directors during the September 8th board meeting. In closing, we look forward to distributing the call to artists for the Dublin Art and Public Places Commission at ML Red Tribute Nature Reserve in early November, continuing to work with city staff to bring another large-scale permanent public artwork to our award-winning collection. All of these programs that contribute so significantly to Dublin's quality of life have been created and executed in collaboration with many members of the community, both individual and organizational. I'd like to recognize the collaborative spirit of those who have helped us realize this body of important community programming, including Dublin City Council, the City of Dublin staff from the following departments: Police, Human Resources, Communications and Public Information, Recreation Services, Parks and Recreation, Parks Operations, Community Events and Volunteer Resources, as well as Washington Township EMS, Centero Counseling Centers, Dublin City Schools, Dublin Chamber of Commerce, Japan America Society of Central Ohio, Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau, Dublin Bridges and Welcome Warehouse. So, thank you again for your steadfast support of Dublin as a leader in innovation and creativity. Your investment will pay dividends for years to come as those who live, work, play, learn and visit Dublin continue to thrive due to your vision and support of Dublin Arts Council. Thank you.
Well, thanks, David. Really appreciate that update, knowing all the wonderful things you and the team are doing. I know, you know, the garden party was sorely missed. Spring almost went unmarked without the garden party that you were holding. So, that certainly is a treasure, and hopefully, you know, if you want to send over those links to your silent auction, we'd be happy to do the best we can to get those out into the community. Certainly want to support in every way that we can. And, you know, the list of the folks that are sponsoring you are the who's who in Central Ohio, certainly in Dublin. So, thanks for engaging our corporate community in such a meaningful way and really incorporating them into the arts community. I have a proclamation here for you that we will get an official copy over to your office in short order, since I can't physically give it to you this evening, but I would like to read it so that you'll at least, we'll at least be able to celebrate that portion of it. Whereas, October is National Arts and Humanities Month, which encourages everyone to come together to recognize accumulated wisdom, intellect and imagination of mankind. And whereas, Dublin Arts Council is a thriving local arts agency, which administers comprehensive, engaging programs, including a variety of award-winning art and public places projects, a year-long visual art series, the annual Dublin Arts Council Sundays at Sodda, summer concert series, site-specific dance projects and classes and workshops at the Dublin Arts Center. And whereas, the Dublin Arts Center is committed to programs and events that highlight the best in aesthetic appearances with a strong emphasis on education and social awareness. And whereas, Dublin Arts Council is supported in part by the City of Dublin's Hotel Motel Tax Fund, the Ohio Arts Council helping to fund Dublin Arts Council programs in encouraging economic growth, educational excellence and cultural enrichment. And whereas, Dublin Arts Council is further supported by the National Endowment for the Arts, contributions from individuals, corporations, foundations, fundraising events, classes, gallery sales and in-kind contributions. And whereas, the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of our families, our communities and our country, strengthen our national economy by generating 166.3 billion in total economic activity annually. Now, therefore, I, Chris Amaro's, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby declare the month of October 2020 as National Arts and Humanities Month, the City of Dublin, and recognize the Dublin Arts Council for its role in engaging our community by cultivating creativity and fostering lifelong learning through the arts. Signed this 20th day of September 2020. So, thank you, David, and we'll get you, get you an official copy over to your office.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Grimes. I appreciate it.
I know I can speak on behalf of. Yeah, I can speak on behalf of the seven faces you see on your computers, how much we appreciate all the, Jane's applauding, round of applause.
Thank you.
How much we appreciate all that you do for our community. So, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Have water for me.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take an opportunity here for citizen comments. If there is any subject that is not on this evening's agenda, this is the appropriate time for a public comment. I will ask the clerk's office and in the clerk's office if she has received any public comment through that venue.
No comments.
And also through the PR, our stream and website, Sue, have we received anything there?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. We have received a couple of comments through the website. One is in relation to work being done on Emerald Parkway by AEP and sidewalks that have been closed. And the person who contacted the city through the website has been notified, and that staff will get back to him to address his issues. The other one I will read is from Jeff Reed at 6605 Long Shore Street, apartment 410, Dublin, Ohio. And the subject is "Race Car Like Noise on Riverside." Good afternoon. What is the city of Dublin doing or what can it do to reduce the race car-like noise on Riverside Drive in front of the Bridge Park development, right before the roundabout, from sports cars revving their engines? Is extremely loud and rude and makes living here much less desirable, which I hate to see happen because it's a wonderful community. Thank you for your attention to this.
I think I see Chief Price on here, or perhaps Dana McDaniel. I know that they've been working on this information here. Maybe they can provide, there he is, Chief. Maybe they can provide us some updates with where we are and what our abilities are, what our limitations are and where we are in the process.
Yes, good evening, members of council. Yes, just wanted to let you know, I have forwarded that email. I did receive it earlier today and forwarded it to our traffic unit supervisor, and we will have a member of our traffic unit reach out to Mr. Reed tomorrow to discuss that concern a little further. If you remember, we talked about it a few meetings ago about the noise complaint and about speed-related issues and traffic concerns in the Riverside Drive area, in particular in front of Bridge Park. That is something that we had been working, pretty focused traffic enforcement efforts along Riverside Drive from the round, just south of the roundabout and just north of 270 back in April and through most of the summer. Certainly, that's something we can reach back out and provide some of the feedback we've had from our officers working those traffic concerns to Mr. Reed and then gain any other information that we might have about the ongoing issues as it relates to the noise concern. As it relates to a violation for excessive noise from a muffler or from vehicles that are revving through that particular area, or any area for that matter in Dublin, our focus typically is on the reckless operation of those vehicles sometimes associated with that noise when we are working traffic enforcement in those areas. Certainly, the noise is also an additional concern that if our officers observe and are in position to make a traffic stop specific to that excessive noise from a muffler, something we could address, although primarily our focus is on that moving violation as it relates to the safety and travel through that particular area. But we will reach out to Mr. Reed and follow up tomorrow.
Great. Thank you. Jane, I think has something to add. Go ahead, Jane.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said, I'm curious for traffic, a question for traffic and engineering. Because the park will soon be completed, we're going to have a lot of pedestrians crossing Riverside Drive. And with speed and everything, is there going to be any? And with speed and everything, is there going to be anything we'll be able to do to either reduce the speed limit in that section as we've gotten larger and have more population? Or are there any traffic slowing opportunities that we're going to be able to utilize to make that a safer crossover? And no one has to answer that now. I'm just curious because I can see that this is going to become a problem as we get a lot more people trying to come back and forth across the road. So, just something that maybe we can get traffic to talk to us about at a later date as we get closer to opening that park up?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question and observation and quite a bit to unpack. So, I would take you up on getting back to you later on that. I know we've, we've had internal conversations of a similar vein and so, yeah, I'd like to respond to you at a later date if we could.
Anybody else? Chief, I know I have heard several complaints, a disproportionate amount, both through Riverside Drive and Dublin Road about vehicular noise. And I understand and appreciate that safety is certainly our number one priority, as it always should be. But, you know, we may want to start thinking about enforcing the noise ordinances that would be associated with that because there have, it has been very disruptive. So, I don't know. I can't speak for all of my fellow council members, but first of all, first and foremost, keep safety at the top, but perhaps add to it, you know, looking to enforce the ordinances that are in place relative to excessive noise.
Yeah, I would second that. I live on Brand Road, it's, you know, kind of a country road out here and we have the same issue. It's not necessarily speeding. It's a lot of acceleration, but it's also deceleration, people downshifting. So, you know, a car can be loud and obnoxious, sitting still really. And in some cases, they're just revving the engines unnecessarily. So, I would be all for enforcement of that across the city, not just in Bridge Park, even though that's the area that we're hearing most of the concerns from.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate you. Okay, anything else, Sue and, was that it? Oh, yeah? Okay. All right, we will move on to our consent agenda. There are two items on our consent agenda. Both are meeting minutes dated August the 24th and September the 14th. Is there a request to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Have we received?
There is a correction, though. I think that needs to be made on the minutes of the September 14th meeting. On a vote on the Crawford-Hoyne, I think it was not written correctly. It was a, it was a positive vote instead of a negative vote. So, I think under the, so I think that should be corrected.
Can you cite a page or a location?
Yes, hold on. I can't. I've got to pull it up. Of course, it won't pull up.
I think, I think it was a little confusing because it was not a motion, so, but we'll clarify that to make it-
Okay, I can, yes, let me just correct it.
Jane, are you saying, because we voted yes to postpone?
I'll find it here. I'm sorry. It's not pulling up for me. Just a second. It was on the Crawford-Hoyne vote and it was Mayor Amros's comment and it said "can" instead of "can't" support. So, I wanted to be sure that that was corrected because if someone read it, then it would make the, the vote look odd or it wouldn't reconcile, I guess. It is... I'm down to page...
Page 22.
Is it 22? Thank you, Kathy.
Anne, do you think you have enough there to reference that to make that clarification?
Yeah, I can get with Jane if I have any questions.
Thank you. See where that, that is at the bottom of that page. Thanks for finding it. Yeah, it's on page 19 of 23.
I should have, I should have-
Bottom of page 19 of 23.
Okay. I just thought it was important. All right, thank you.
Any other, any other corrections or comments to the meeting minutes? Okay, and have we received any public comment through the clerk's office or via live stream comments?
No public comments.
Uh, I will make a motion to approve the two consent agenda items. Is there a second?
No, I second it.
Thank you, John. Anne, would you please call a roll?
Chair Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Mayor Amros Grums.
Okay, next up, we have postponed item ordinance 21-20.
Adopting the 2021 to 2025 Five-Year Capital Improvements Program.
Okay, Matt Stifler will be presenting the staff report. There he is. Matt, please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. The 2021 through 2025 CIP, the only changes are the changes to the documents to reflect the changes that were previously requested at the workshop and council meeting, previous council meeting. All of the changes should be reflected in those documents and we are requesting adoption at this time.
Great, thank you. Have we received any public comments either through the clerk's office or the web?
No comments here.
No comments here.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion?
Matt, it's Kathy. I just wanted to say I appreciate you pulling all this together and I appreciated the summary document that identified what the changes were, largely that, you know, we're glad we're able to advance some of the park projects earlier and that, you know, economically that works. I know it is not reflected in the, in the document as such, but I just wanted to be sure that we noted that the hope was that we would be able to cash fund this, provided that the COVID situation continues to be okay on the economics in, of our budget for 2021 and 2022. I just wanted to note that because we had a variety of discussion, but at this point, we're, we're following a debt plan for that. Just given the situation, counsel, and then at a future date, if things hold, choose not to do that. But I appreciate your work on that and putting the plan so that we can advance those important projects and still make sure the economics are well-managed and, you know, flexible, I guess is the word, moving forward. So, thank you for all your work, Matt.
Your comments? Hearing none. Anne, would you please call a roll?
Sure. Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grums? Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to second reading, ordinance 23-20.
Amending the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2020.
And we will go back to Matt Stifler.
There are no changes from the previous hearing on this ordinance and staff has recommended adoption at this time.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any public comments via the clerk's office or via live stream?
None here.
No comments.
Thank you so much. Council questions, discussion? Point five, hearing none. Anne, would you please call a roll?
Sure. Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grums? Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 24-20.
Authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents in contrast to acquire a 0.069-acre standard highway easement from Chester Agunka located at 6149 Karo Road for the public purpose of constructing a new roadway which will be open to the public without charge.
Great, thank you. And we have Mr. Hammersmith with us. So, Paul, please take it away.
Yes, good evening, council. Staff has no new or updated information to provide related to this item. Staff does recommend adoption this evening at the second reading.
Great, thank you. Anne, Sue, do we have anything, a public comment coming from either the clerk's office or via live stream?
No public comments here.
No comments or questions.
Council questions, discussion? Hearing none. Anne, would you please call a roll?
Yes. Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grums? Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner? And Mr. Peterson?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, ordinance 25-20.
Authorizing the establishment of a coronavirus relief special revenue fund and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Matt Stifler for our staff report.
There are no changes from the first hearing on this ordinance and again, staff is requesting, or recommending rather, that you approve this ordinance tonight and declare an emergency. Thank you.
Anne, have we received comments through the clerk's office?
No comments.
Sue, via live stream?
No comments or questions.
Council questions and discussion? I do think that it's important to mention that passing this as an emergency is really an establishment of a fund so that we can receive dollars, not that we can spend dollars. I think it's important to note that, that this coming out of the house, the Ohio House, it was very much delayed and not have a lot of time to appropriate these funds. So, emergency declaration to receive these funds, I do believe is appropriate. So, I'll make a motion for the emergency passage. Is there a second relative to the emergency?
I'll second.
Oh, Mr. Reiner? Sorry? Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grums? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Now, we'll call a roll on the ordinance.
Okay, Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
And Mayor Amros Grums.
Okay, ordinance 26-20.
Amending ordinance number 5894 passed June 20, 1994, and subsequently amended to supplement the public improvements to be made back at the property identified in that ordinance.
Okay, and we have Matt Stifler again on this, our staff report.
Once again, council, there are no changes from the first hearing and staff is recommending passage at tonight's council meeting. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Matt. A public comment through the clerk's office or via live stream, Anne?
Yeah, no comments through our office.
And no comments or questions.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion? Hearing none. Anne, would you please call a roll?
Sure. Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grums? Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to introductions, first reading of ordinance. The first would be ordinance 27-20.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.204-acre, more or less perpetual easement from the Murefield Association, Inc., from Reserve RRRR located on the north side of Glick Road for the construction and maintenance of the Glick Road Section 3 shared use path.
I'll introduce it.
Introduction. Thanks, Christina. Staff report, Mr. Hammersmith. Paul, please.
Members of council, the city of Dublin is preparing to construct Section 3 of the shared use path adjacent to Glick Road, which will be located along the north side of Glick Road from Carnoustie Drive to Dunedin Drive and then along the south side of Glick Road from Dunedin Drive to Mirkirk Drive to the east. The city is obtaining certain property interest from the Murefield Association to construct the path. In the area where the path is not located within the existing right-of-way, it will be located in the area located or owned by the Murefield Association and designated as Reserve RRRR. So, that's 4R. After engaging in very amicable and supportive discussions, the association has agreed to dedicate as a donation to the city the necessary perpetual easement needed to construct this path. State Africa men's adoption of the ordinance this evening before you, allowing for that donation at the second reading and public hearing on October 12th. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate that. Have we received public comment through the clerk's office?
No, we have received no comments.
And live stream?
No comments or questions.
Council questions, discussion? Paul, maybe you name that RRRR to do your best pirate imitation or something. I'm not sure.
I thought about it, but I thought better of it too. I did also want to just indicate that we are expecting in October 12th to bring before you, council, a resolution for bid acceptance for this project that will allow us to commence construction this year.
Right. Well, it doesn't, unless I'm reading my screen improperly, it doesn't look like council has questions at this time. We'll look forward to seeing you back on October 12th for the second reading.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, introduction, public hearing resolution, Resolution 48-20.
Setting the lowest and best bid for the Kaufman Park pickleball court project, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the project.
And we interrupt you?
I'll introduce it.
And Matt Earman is for the, our, present our staff report this evening, so please, Matt, take it away.
Good evening, members of council. In your packet is information regarding this resolution, authorizing the city manager to enter into contract with Vasco Sport Contractors for the construction of pickleball courts in Kaufman Park as illustrated by the site plan that was submitted in your packet. This project has received significant public input from the pickleball community, which includes a bank of eight courts with lighting, fencing, windscreen, a supportive stormwater system, and appropriate landscaping. As part of the 2020 CIP, the design and construction of this project was approved for $400,000. The city received bid from four contractors with the lowest invested, totaling from Vasco Sport Contractors for $311,050 for the construction portion of this project. If approved, staff anticipates construction activities to begin late September with the completion date later this winter. As with any project involving asphalt, certainly completion will be contingent upon the availability of asphalt as colder weather sets in this fall. Staff has reviewed the references from Vasco Sport Contractors and is confident in their ability to complete this project with high standards. Staff recommends approval of this bid to enter into contract with Vasco Sport Contractors. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Matt. Question, let me, public comment first. Sue and Anne, have we reached and received any public comment?
No, we have not.
No comments or questions.
Thank you for that. Council questions, discussion? Looks like Jane's got one.
Yes, I have a question for Matt. Since pickleball is new to the city, we don't have any courts other than the gym that's turned into a pickleball court. Will there be enough funds left over to buy a few pickleball paddles and a bucket of balls? Because there are a lot of people that are going to want to play that, I went out and bought pickleball paddles and they're not inexpensive for my grandkids. So, I know there's easily 100 very excited pickleball players right now watching this tonight. pickleball players right now watching this tonight, knowing that they've got a pickleball court, but we don't have any paddles. So could we throw those into the ask to get some so that if kids want to try it out, they'll be able to go to the rec center and borrow them?
I think it's a great idea. We have actually implemented that idea for the first striping of some of our outdoor courts that allowed some pickleball striping on our tennis courts. And we had some of the rackets and balls available at the recreation center for people to register to check out. I don't see why we couldn't continue that process if it hasn't been continued to this point, for sure.
That's great. And also, I want to thank you for all of the engagement you had with the pickleball community, because I know that they're very excited and happy with the outcome of the design. So thanks, Matt.
You're welcome.
Others?
Hey, Matt, I had a quick question. Just for my own education, I have not played pickleball yet. Are those, do the courts have flexible use? Because I know tennis courts sometimes are pickle courts, or are these exclusively for pickleball, or are there other activities that will take place on those courts?
Pickleball courts are generally, I'll just say roughly a third of the size of a tennis court, which gives a whole lot of new flexibility for youngsters and adults, senior adults alike, to low-impact types of activity. So this is an up and growing sport. It has been for the last 10 years or more, and more so today than ever. This was one of those that originated down south in Florida, and it has just swept the nation. So this is one of the types of courts that is primarily only used for pickleball. The good news is that with an asphalt court, you can reconfigure fences and asphalt and striping. Fairly reasonably inexpensive process. You know, if this is a trend that no longer becomes a trend of favor, you can, you can, you can adapt it.
I like the location, by the way. I know that in some residential areas, because the noise is a little louder with the paddles, that there's been some concern about noise. I think this is a great location, because there should be no concern about noise at all, given where it is. So, great choice on location.
Okay, anything else? None. Anne, would you please call roll?
Sure. Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amaro's Grooms? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Okay, next up, Resolution 49-20.
Authorizing the city manager to renew a parking lot lease agreement with the Dublin Community Church.
Introduce it.
And our staff report this evening is by Sarah O'Malley. There, Sarah. Well, good evening, Sarah. Welcome, please. Where is yours?
Good evening, members of city council. It's a pleasure to be with you here tonight to introduce Resolution 4920 detailing the renewal of a parking lease agreement with Dublin Community Church, which is located at 81 Westbridge Street in historic Dublin. The proposed resolution tonight represents the third time the city has renewed a parking agreement with the church since 2011. And at that time, a historic Dublin office tenant subleased 30 spaces from the city. And when the agreement was renewed in 2017, that same tenant at the time, Accelerate Media, reduced their sublease from 30 spaces to 15, which brings us to the renewal to date, to the renewal of our agreement in 2020. So due to the completion of the library garage during that construction process in a temporary, yet extended, as we all know, remote work structure as a result of COVID-19, Accelerate Media has since canceled their sublease of these 30 spaces from the city. So the proposed resolution in front of you this evening would renew the 30 parking spaces from Dublin Community Church with one primary change, changing their use from permit parking, as was used in the past, back to public parking. And the financial terms of this agreement would remain flat at $9,000 per year or $27,000 over the three-year term. So as historic Dublin continues to evolve and to compete with other entertainment destinations and to help balance parking needs on that southwest side of the historic district, it would be the staff's recommendation that we continue this lease of the 30 parking spaces for public use from the Dublin Community Church. So in your packet this evening, you were provided there's a site layout and an image of the signs that are at that location right now. So those are the change that we would be suggesting from the permit to a public parking. So I'll end with that. I'm happy to answer any questions they have.
Very good. Thank you, Sarah. Anne, do we have public comment through the clerk's office?
We do not.
And Sue, via live stream?
No comments or questions.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion? Jane?
Sarah, I wanted to ask you, in the parking study that the city did a few years back, one of the, I was looking at it, and it said that on the evenings in that southwest corner, the parking, the parking lots are fairly full. Was there ever any discussion about, because I know it's like, it's just a daytime use until 7:00 PM. Was there any discussion about evening use, especially on the weekends? Would the, would the church be open to that? Because I think as we bring in more restaurants, hopefully, as we do, we may need that space in the evening. Any thoughts?
Sure. I don't disagree with that. I think the church, from their perspective, the weekends is when they primarily need those spaces for weekend activities. The same thing like for the evenings for their church groups, study groups, different women's clubs that get together. So I think for this particular, the renewal, that wasn't part of it. It is that daytime, you know, 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM because of their own activity schedule. It's something that, you know, I'm not saying would never happen, but for this particular one, I think just because of their activities at that location, that they have, those have kind of been earmarked for, you know, church activities.
Yeah. You know, I live in the district, so I don't really see that the evenings are very packed over there. And I just, I think as we go forward, it might be a conversation you might want to bring up with them to see what they might be open to, even if it's one evening or up until, you know, a certain time. I just, I can see where there's pressure, especially the parking study shows it, but I can see the pressure anyway on it on the weekend evenings. So it might be something worth exploring with them.
I think the change in signage will be a really welcome addition to those spaces, too, because I've driven the district at different times. And right now, if you look at the signage, it says permit parking. So I think when we change that out and, you know, work with CPI to get the messaging out that these 30 spaces exist, and kind of the framework and how they can be used, I think that will also help make them more user-friendly. So, you know, I would agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else? Other questions? I think when we last talked about this in 2017, I think one of the hesitations Jane made on Saturday evenings was relative to weddings and events like that. And, you know, they were, they were intermittent, but they needed to have what they needed for those. So, but I'm sure we can check in with them and our partners and welcome to discussion. So, hearing no other comments. Anne, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
And Mayor Amaro's Grooms?
Thank you. Next up, Resolution 50-20.
Authorizing the city manager to run to into an agreement with Dublin Development LLC for the purpose of using certain structures on Monterey Drive for fire EMS and police training, for demolition and removal of said structures, and waiving competitive bidding.
Introduce it.
Dana McNeil. And our legal staff is going to present our staff report this evening. So welcome. Take it away.
Good evening, members of council. As Resolution 5020 and accompanying staff report discusses, the city has a unique opportunity to enter into an agreement with the owners of the currently abandoned structures on Monterey Drive that would allow our first responders to train in the structures. This would be in exchange for the city taking responsibility to demo, remove the associated debris, and restore the site. Per the memo and resolution, I'm requesting authorization to expend dollars on private property in exchange for the opportunity for our first responders, namely Dublin Police Department and Washington Township Fire and EMS to train using these structures. I'm also asking that competitive bidding be waived. Based on rough estimates that we received so far, we expect this cost to be at or slightly above the bidding threshold. However, we are waiting on some final results of environmentals on the structures to ascertain the presence of any hazardous material. It's possible this cost could go up, but how much, we have not yet finalized. The opportunity to train our first responders in a more realistic environment will also resulting in the removal of these structures, I believe, is truly a win-win-win for our community, for our first responders, and for the owners of the property. So I would suggest this is also in the best interest of the city for the health, safety, and welfare of our public. I will commit that if the environmental costs exceed the training value, I'll let council know and whether or not we should actually execute the contract, or the agreement, rather. But at this point, I see no reason that we would not do that. Speed is of the essence, given the time of year and the training opportunity that we would have on hand. Staff recommends council pass Resolution 5020. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Great, thank you, Dana. Anne, have we received any public comment through the clerk's office?
No, we have not.
Sue, have we via live stream?
No comments or questions.
Good, thank you. Council questions, discussion? Dana, I think this is a great, oh, I'm sorry. Jane, were you wanting?
Oh, I'm probably going to mimic what you're going to say, Chris. I think that the water for residents and everyone in the area are going to be absolutely thrilled that you're getting to good use with the demolition of those structures, and it will be a welcome relief to see those down.
Yeah, I was by there as recently as the week before last, and every day that passes, they get more unsightly. And I can only imagine the, yeah, the animals living in and around that area that are nuisance to the animals. So, thanks for pursuing that, Dana. Sure do appreciate it. I will, if there's nothing further, Anne, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Amaro's Grooms? And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Dana, okay, I will make a motion to waive the council rules of order to address Resolutions 51-20 through 61-20 together, and have the clerk read the property owner and location in the record. Is there a second?
I will second that.
And is there a, and Anne, would you please call the roll on the motion?
Yes. Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Amaro's Grooms? And Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And these are, we need an introduction, sorry.
Introduce.
Ah, okay.
Okay. These resolutions are 5120 Anthony Joffrey and John Joffrey, 6262 Iderman Road. Resolution 5220 is 33 Dublin Industrial Park LLC, 6280 Rings Road. Resolution 5320 is Joseph F. Monkska Trustee, 6480 Shire Rings Road. 5420 is William L. Baker and Nancy A. Baker at 6430 Shire Rings Road. Resolution 5520 is Certech LLC, 6399 Shire Rings Road. 5620 is SHS 725 LLC at 6245 Old Avery Road. Resolution 5720 is W. Baker Holdings LLC and William L. Baker at 6360 to 6390 Rings Road. Resolution 5820 is Avery Lakes Partners LLC, 6201 to 6233 Avery Road. Resolution 5920 is Dublin Investments 2, 6385 Avery Road. Resolution 6020 is Samuel M. Baker at 6252 Avery Road. And 6120 is Medex Inc. at 6250 Shire Rings Road.
Great, thank you, Anne. And our staff report this evening is from Mr. Hammersmith. So Paul?
Members of council, the City of Dublin and the Ohio State University, known as Project Partners, are working together to construct public improvements in the area of Avery Road, Shire Rings Road, and Iderman Road. The Project Partners entered into an economic development agreement on May 24 of 2019 for these public improvements. The project requires the acquisition of property interests from the 11 property owners that the clerk has read into the record this evening. Our goal through the, this project is to have the needed right-of-way acquired in December of this year. The city is hopeful that an amicable resolution can be reached with each of the property owners. However, these resolutions begin the imminent domain process in the event that negotiations are unsuccessful. Staff recommends approval of these resolutions this evening to allow the project to continue moving forward and remain on the time, the established timeframe. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Good, thank you, Paul. Anne, have we received any public comment through the clerk's office?
We have not.
And via live stream, Sue?
No comments or questions.
Council questions, discussion? I have one, Paul. Is this exhaustive of all of the parcels that are required for the completion of this project?
Yes, that is. And I, you know, if you're curious, I do have a property map exhibit that I can show you if you wanted to see it. But yes, this is all the properties that are impacted, both by University Boulevard, Phase 2, that roadway extension, and the improvement of the intersection at Avery Road and Shire Rings Road.
Great, thanks. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Anne, just call roll on Resolution 5120 through 61.
Sure. Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amaro's Grooms? Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to other, the other portion of our agenda, operating budget revenue projections. I believe that Mr. Stifler has another presentation for us. So please, Matt, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. Tonight, we begin discussions surrounding the 2021 operating budget. This slide is a new slide since the presentation I sent you last week, but I promise it's the only slide I added. I realized I did not have a timeline, and I wanted to include that. So as I stated, we are beginning the conversation tonight with a presentation of revenue estimates. The first hearing on the ordinance will be at the next council meeting on October 12th. The following Monday, we will have an operating budget workshop. It is important to note that we do not intend to utilize the committee hearing process this year at this time. That is, of course, subject to council's opinion and desire regarding that change. October 26, we will have a second operating budget workshop just prior to the council meeting, and the second hearing, potential vote, adoption of this ordinance will either occur on October 26 or November 9, as we work through this process. Our agenda for this evening will be to examine the 2020 operating budget, the operating revenues and funds that compose our operating budget. And for the operating revenues, we will look at those in several different ways, including a more in-depth discussion of income tax, the recreation fund, hotel motel fund, and we'll conclude with a summary of our revenue estimates.
Matt, this is, just, just real quick, are you sharing slides?
I am. Are they not showing up? I forgot to show them.
We don't see the slides.
I heard you. Check. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dana. All right, I think we, can you see my slides now?
Yes.
All right, thank, sorry about that. All right, so, let's go back. So here, here's the slide that I added that you didn't get to see on the dates and the outline, as I previously discussed. If there are any questions, I'm happy to go over it again, as well as our agenda for this evening. We're going to begin with a discussion of the 2020 operating budget. As council is aware, when the COVID-19 pandemic first began back in March, we had a fairly extensive COVID-19 budget presentation in April. extensive, uh, COVID-19 budget presentation in April and then continued that presentation in the form of budget memos initially every two weeks and then every month. And the last budget memo was in July, following the, uh, deadline for, the filing deadline for our taxes. And at that time, the memo indicated that our income taxes were holding very steady and we have not, uh, updated that memo at that, since that time. And the reason for that is really we've seen stabilization. And because of that stabilization, I think I'm comfortable at this time presenting some of the, uh, fund summary and an estimated revenue source for 2020. As you recall, the budget for 2020 had operating revenues totaling $92.9 million and operating expenditures totaling $95.7 million. In April, because of the uncertainty surrounding the COVID-19 situation, uh, we developed best, moderate, and worst-case scenarios, and I've eliminated the moderate here because it made the slide a little too cluttered, but you can see that our best-case scenario in April included about $88 million in operating revenues and our worst-case scenario included about $70 million. I'm happy to report that we find ourselves, at least, uh, according to today, if there are no additional third, uh, outside influences, third-party influences that would take us off of our current trajectory, that we can project operating revenues totaling about $90.7 million. And if we are to take that revenue estimate and compare it against our budgeted operating expenditures of about $86.1 million, you'll see we're predicting currently a $4.5 million positive, uh, operating surplus in this year. So I just wanted to see if there were any questions or comments on this slide before we move on to kind of talking about the 2021 operating budget.
Hey Matt, I only had one quick question about the very last, the, the, uh, coronavirus relief fund, the 2.4 million?
Yes.
Is that pretty solid? I mean, what's the wiggle room on that?
That is, I hope that's a minimum and that the, the, the variances that we could receive more. That's based on the spreadsheets that were distributed for Senate Bill 357, which was later rolled into and passed in a House bill that is now awaiting the governor's signature. So, we received an initial distribution of about $400,000, a second distribution from the controlling board of about half that amount, and then the estimated distribution from what was formerly Senate Bill 357 was about $1.8 million. So based on the estimates from them, I feel fairly comfortable that that 2.4 million is very near a floor. As local governments do not expend their CARES money and they have to give it back essentially, that will then be redistributed and we could see some of that. I am seeing information out there that some communities do intend to give some portion of it back. There are a lot of restrictions and it's not necessarily very easy to spend this money, unfortunately. You'd think it should be, but, but it isn't. And, uh, so I hope that that 2.4 million is really a floor.
Thank you, Matt. So you're saying that we're not experiencing the difficulty, if you will, in saying that we can spend those dollars, we're others?
I, I'm, I'm not prepared to commit to that today, but I'm saying I think we're about two-thirds of the way there and we have some ideas we're continuing to explore. I, I feel really comfortable that we're, we're going to find the way to get there. We're not there today, but we're working on it.
Thank you.
All right, regarding the 2021 operating revenues, just to recap, operating funds are the funds that make up the operating budget, as you see on this slide. A significant number of these funds, as marked by the asterisk, are supported at least in part by transfers from the general fund. It's important to note, as I have here, that the hotel motel tax fund is not typically supported by a transfer from the general fund, but because of the 60% reduction in hotel motel tax revenues, uh, in 2020 and the prediction that you'll see in this presentation of a continuing 60% reduction in 2021, we are going to be proposing a transfer from the general fund to the hotel motel fund, uh, for 2021. It is my genuine hope that this transfer does not become a recurring annual subsidy, but, uh, we're going to have to continue to wait and see on that. Regarding the operating revenues itself, we are projecting an operating revenue of $86.6 million in 2021. This amount represents a decrease of 6.8% as compared to the 2020 operating budget. And we'll go through that decrease in more detail on the next slide, but you can see almost 80% of our operating funds come from, uh, from income taxes with charges for services making up the second largest component. With regard to the, the previous pie graph, a little bit more detail, so our income tax is projected to increase 1% from 2020's budget, so you can see there that that income tax increase is a little less than $700,000. Also in the local tax category is the hotel motel tax that's distributed into that fund from 232. We are predicting the continuation of a 60% decrease in that fund for next year. My hope is that that's conservative and we will see continued growth in that fund. Um, but we're going to start with a, a budget that's conservative and represents what the last half of 2020 has looked like thus far. So that is a decrease of about $1.44 million. You can see we have some reduction in intergovernmental revenues. We have a large reduction in recreation fund. These are charges for services to the recreation fund. We'll explore this in a little more detail, but we're basically predicting about a 50% reduction in recreation charge for services revenue. Um, all other funds' charges for services are basically holding steady. With regard to fines, licenses, fees, and permits, we are seeing a slight reduction there, um, as fewer court cases are going through our court system, as fewer planning and engineering and building permits, uh, building standards fees are going through, we are seeing some slowdown there, um, that we're, we're modeling a little bit of a reduction on. Of course, interest rates have fallen, uh, significantly and quickly, so we're predicting a decrease in interest income. And then in miscellaneous income, this is by and large the sale of capital assets. About 3.2 million of that 3.99 million dollar number is the sale of property, um, that would lay, that would become the, that is to become the OSU Ambulatory Medical Center. So obviously, we can only sell that in one year. We sold that this year and we see the reduction of 3.2 million reflecting that, uh, sale next year. All told, all of these factors combined are the $6.3 million reduction, which is about This slide provides a little bit more details, but I already talked through most of it, um, giving you some, uh, information that goes with the previous slide. Budgeting these revenues and, uh, the actual revenue, uh, this graph dates back from 2006 to 2021. The light green line on the bottom is our budgeted revenue, where the darker line on top is our actual revenue. That orange part there, I, I don't want to call it actual because it's not, it's estimated, but it would go with the actual line, so I wanted to include it, but differentiate that it's different. So that 2020 number reflects the $90.7 million number we talked about earlier. So if you want to compare our actual to our budgets over time, this is what that graph begins to look like. The end of it, I included this graph for reference. There's a sale of capital assets, a one-time, non-recurring, that we budgeted in 2020 and 2019, and the timescale of the previous graph can make it a little difficult, so I've eliminated kind of the, the non-recurring revenue and the time distortion of the prior graph, and that's why this graph is included mainly just for reference, so you can kind of see it a little more clearly how, uh, COVID-19 has really impacted our operating revenues in 2020. So going to our income, uh, estimates, obviously the largest, 78% of our operating revenue is, is income taxes. In 2019, our income tax collection totaled $93.3 million. We'd originally estimated and earlier this year indicated that we were not changing our original estimate from $89.3 million roughly in 2020. Again, we are projecting a 1% increase in income taxes next year. That gives us a budget number of $90.2 million. That number's distributed 75% to the general fund and 25% to the capital improvements fund, and that is the income tax number that we used to create the 2021 CIP passed earlier today. Our actual revenues through September 22nd totaled $69.7 million. This figure represents a 2% increase or about $1.4 million over the same time period last year. And we will continue to examine these income taxes on a weekly basis, and if there's any significant change, we will be certain to let you know. The details we find with holdings are up 2.8% or about $1.5 million. Business net profits are down 15.5% or about $1.1 million, $1.2 million. Um, we are still awaiting the deposit from the Ohio Business Gateway, so we actually think that this might be a bit of an overstatement of the decline in revenue. We're expecting that deposit in October, I believe, so we'll keep you informed on that. Um, but we have some hope at least that net profits might not be down by that full 15.5% when that deposit is, uh, finally received. And individual returns are up 16% or about $1 million. It's also important to note that these estimates do not take into account the potential impact of the 20-day rule. Another fund that's heavily, another revenue source that is heavily correlated with the fund that's highly impacted by the COVID-19 emergency is the recreation fund. So in 2019, our recreation revenues totaled almost $3.9 million. In 2020, our original estimate was for that $3.9 million. Year-to-date, we've received about $1.1 million and our current cost recovery is about 23%. And you can see graphically on the right, that's the last five years of revenues on a per-monthly basis, and you can see that in 2020, uh, we actually had negative revenues for the recreation fund in May and June, and that is really a reflection of people requesting refunds for the summer camps and the day camps that they were not able to take or not wanting to take part in. And you can see there that the timing of this, um, pandemic, really starting in mid-March, um, drastically increased, decreased the amount of revenue that was received in April, May, and June, which are the most important months from a revenue generation standpoint for the recreation fund. Um, of that $3.9 million, about one-third of that is annual membership fees. The largest chunk outside of that is really day camps that earn about $700,000 to $800,000 a year. So the timing on this couldn't be worse from that perspective, um, and the impact of that is, is fairly obvious when you look at this chart. What gives me some hope projecting forward for the $2 million estimate in 2021 is you can see that little blue bar is slowly increasing, right? August, July, August, September show some growth, and I'm hopeful that that growth will continue. I don't know when it'll ever get to the same height as the previous years, but my hope is that it gets to, uh, my prediction or estimate at this time is it at least gets to half that height starting in 2021, um, and we don't see those negative months moving forward as, uh, individuals will have a clear expectation of what social distancing means next summer and what those summer camps might look like. So, all of that results basically in a 2021 revenue estimate of a little over $2 million. If we see this estimate, we're looking at a cost recovery of about 30%, um, depending on, uh, where exactly expenditures shake out and where exactly estimates, uh, are in terms of actual revenue received. The hotel motel fund is also seeing some significant changes, as, as you're aware, just by way of historical information. The actual revenue from the fund in 2019 was about $4.9 million. It's split fairly evenly between hotel motel tax revenue and events administration slash other revenue. I want to point out here that this slide, the revenue mentioned here is only the revenue that's directly deposited into Fund 232, so that is 65% of hotel motel taxes. The other 35% is, uh, deposited into an agency fund that is not part of the operating budget and distributed to, uh, the Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau. So, um, that distribution takes place before the operating budget accounting, uh, begins. So in 2020, we had an estimate that we received hotel motel funding of about $2.4 million and events administration revenue of about $2.4 million. In actuality, um, the results, I think we're going to, I think my first slide had hotel motel revenue of about $900,000 total is the year projection. So we're seeing significant declines in hotel motel revenue, and of course, you're aware we didn't hold an Irish festival this year, so all those revenues are, are then absent from the fund this year. In 2021, we're projecting or estimating about $3.4 million in revenue. Again, regarding hotel motel tax, we're projecting about $960,000. This is a decrease of 60% in that fund from that revenue source. It's also important to note that we are still estimating events and other revenues totaling $2.4 million, so we are going to make the assumption in this operating budget that we are going to conduct a normal Irish festival. And that is a fairly large assumption, and I don't want to make that without missing it because I'm not sure that it's realistic, but it's what we're going to start with. And if social distancing or other restrictions make normal revenues not likely, we are going to have to have some additional conversations prior to making any financial, significant financial commitments. And let me explain the rationale there because we're going to see that a couple times, and that is, I, I don't think it's necessarily particularly easy to make a decision on the 2021 Irish festival in September or October. You're really going to want to make a decision on the Irish festival in March, April, May next year, similar to how we made a decision on the Irish festival this year. So we're going to budget as though nothing abnormal is going to happen and then deal with the reality on the ground when we know it in March, April, or May. We will bring that back to you and have a conversation that, look, the Irish festival revenues are really going to be what? Because what are the social distancing? What is the sentiment? We could be in a fully vaccinated world or a world that's been ravaged with no vaccine in sight, and both of those are a possibility, and I don't want to pretend to be able to predict what that looks like, so I'm not going to. And we're going to pass that conversation in the next year prior to significant expenditures and then have that conversation then. The remainder, yes, go ahead.
Before you move on, then, then I'm assuming that the same, I'm going to put same or normal offsetting expenses we'll see in the, in the expense side, right?
Absolutely.
Just, so it's not that we're being over-optimistic on one, we're just being, uh, we're, we're putting both in.
Absolutely. It's going to have normal revenues and normal expenditures, and that's going to be our assumption, and when we have real information to act on that either of those assumptions is wrong, we're going to bring that forward and have a discussion about how to proceed at that time.
Thank you.
It's, it's just hard to do it any other way. Regarding the rest of the operating funds, there's really not a lot going on. Um, the pool fund, you'll see we increased the revenue estimate there by about $67,000 because we, we expect to have a north pool open next year. The reason that that second pool doesn't double the revenue source is $300,000 of pool revenue is in season passes, and it's hard to know what the appropriate estimate for a normal year of season passes would be. So each individual pool doesn't necessarily double or halve the revenue when you have that season pass revenue in. So that is a conservative but reasonable estimate for normal pool operations next summer. And again, this is going to go the same way. We're going to assume normal revenues and estimates, and if information comes in that makes that unlikely, we will have additional conversations. The transfers from the general fund to support the pool fund and from the general fund to support the hotel motel fund are based on normal operations. If normal operations aren't realistic, there will be a need for additional transfers and a discussion will have to take place on whether that's how we want to spend our resources or what our resources look like at that time. So the pool fund has some additional revenue. The safety fund is mainly composed of the dispatch agreement and property taxes, so there's a slight increase there, and there's no change in the remainder of the funds. Fund 201 and 202 are primarily funded through gas taxes and we're, we're holding those funds steady. I expect revenues to be very near that original budget this year and, uh, therefore did not change the estimate for next year. That's again, based on our conservative budgeting philosophy. Um, I think we'll be able to hit those numbers. Putting this all together at the fund level, you can see again-
Can I ask a question real quick about, you said those were primarily through, uh, fuel taxes? That staying the same? I mean, we've all heard the story that, you know, fuel usage is down in the state, but we did have that increase. Is that increase what's filling the gap from reduced usage to holding steady?
Yeah, I think what, what, looking at the $2.5 million number for 2020, I think we're going to be very, very close, 2.4 to 2.6 is my, we could just as easily be over it as we're under it because we budgeted that 40% increase in state fuel taxes pretty conservatively last year. So we had a normal first quarter, we had a near shutdown of the economy for about a quarter, and now people are pretty much getting, getting close to normal in terms of, uh, mobility and driving. of mobility and driving. And given that our prediction for this year with a three-month shutdown is that $2.5 million number, I feel comfortable leaving that alone next year. I'm hopeful that it's, again, conservative and that absent another shutdown, we should be able to easily reach that number.
Great, thank you.
Sure. So again, putting this all together, you see that $6.3 million number we discussed earlier, only this time instead of broken down by category, it's broken down by fund. Again, there are three, three parts of the story here. Hotel motel taxes are down, we know that. Recreation charges for services are down, we know that. And we're not going to sell the property to OSU again, so that's about $3.2 million. All told, we have the $6.3 million reduction. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
I appreciate that. The intergovernmental revenues, they're about $3.4 million. Can you remind us what is in there? Because you're saying those are down slightly.
Yeah, those are predominantly, of that, of that $3.4 million, about $2.5 million of that is those gas tax revenues.
Oh, okay. And the rest?
The rest is, there's some local government revenue, local government fund revenue, that's really where the decrease is projected because as the state has lost sales tax revenue, we expect them to give us less intergovernmental revenue. So that's the reason for the slight decrease. It's really in that subset of revenues.
Okay.
Motor vehicle licenses would be an example. It's really state-collected taxes that are distributed to us.
And on the hotel motel revenues, we're projecting it's sort of going to be down 60, but down 60 this year. We, we had, what, three, three robust months before it went down? Or last year, I'm just trying to do an apples to apples comparison there.
Yeah, we had three normal months roughly, January, February, and March, and then we had three shutdown months. And then we had kind of, I don't know if fear is the right word, but uncertainty regarding how safe it is. And now I think we're actually seeing kind of an increase month to month as people get more tired of being locked in their homes and staycations and just anything different becomes viable. We're seeing some increase in hotel stays from that segment. So that's kind of why I'm hopeful that we could see 60% is really the floor and we should be growing from that.
I'm sorry, so this year we'll see what percent?
This year, I'm still projecting a 60% decline from the start of the year. Let me give you the first slide. So I have operating revenues in the hotel motel of $905,000. So I'm projecting that there will be some growth in hotel motel taxes next year, that the 60% reduction is a little less than the reduction we're factoring in for this year.
But the difference is, I'm just trying, I don't have the numbers in front of me here, so it's not much of an increase over?
No, it's, it's about a $400,000 increase, which is not that much when you consider that the hotels were closed for three months. Even at minimal occupancy, they were generating something, which is not, you know, a lot in terms of normal occupancy, but is significantly more than zero.
You know what might be useful for, you know, as we move forward, is just an assumption that if we get occupancy rates of X percent for these months and X percent for that month, you know what I mean? Because winter is going to look different than maybe spring or summer. I think that would be helpful to, to understand that a little bit.
For the remainder of this year or for next year?
No, for next year, for next year, yeah. For this year, we're about done. I'm just, when you're making those estimates, because I know Scott gives us a nice update every Friday, and they hover up, they hover down about occupancy rates, but that would, I think that would be helpful just to understand really how that projection. And then my second question is rec center renewals. Is that, is that pretty lumpy around the first of the year or is that pretty even throughout the course of the year? So I guess my question is, will we know come January, February? Or how close we are in those estimates or how does that normally work?
It's a good question. I'll look at the seasonality of that, that revenue and get back with you. I'm not familiar with it. I know a couple of years ago, there was a lot of renewals in December.
Okay.
But that's a good question. I'll get back with you on that.
Thank you, Matt.
Matt, can I ask you a question? You mentioned the gateway monies that are yet to come. Do you have any way to know how much is being deferred to the gateway? Is there any way to know what's in that pool waiting to be sent? Do they allow you to log in and find out what's sitting there for Dublin?
I'll have to refer those questions to Kevin, our Director of Taxation, and get you an answer on that. My suspicion is no. I think we're, we know what they used to pay, so we know what they should pay, but that doesn't mean it will be what they pay, unfortunately.
Okay. And are you getting payments timely or are they on, when you expect to receive them? Are they coming when you expect to receiving? How's that efficiency going?
I'll check with Kevin and have him follow that as well.
All right, thanks, Matt.
Anything else from council? I do want to check in with Ann and Sue to see if we see any public comment relative to the operating budget discussion.
No, we have not received anything.
No comments or questions?
Okay, anything else from council? Matt, I can appreciate, that is a ton of work, so thank you for your efforts and sending things to us. Okay, next under other is our Dublin 2035 framework discussion. And I'll turn this over to Vice Mayor DeRosa to see if the discussion is, this is part of what came out of our vision.
Thank you. And I know we deferred this from last time because we didn't want to have a meeting that ended the next day, so I appreciate that. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. There is an, as you know, memo in your file, Deviana, Brendan, and Homer and other staff have worked to incorporate the feedback that we provided to the group at our August 3rd meeting. And part of that feedback, just a sort of refresher here, was a discussion of, we want to have some bold programs. We want to make sure we involve the public, but we don't want to necessarily spend the time looking at every single activity or every single strategy or policy that we have because some are working quite well now, many are working quite well. And which of those do we want to spend our time with? So they took that feedback that we gave them and they have reconfigured a bit of the timeline. And I wanted to just share a couple of the highlights and get folks feedback to see if this is how you'd like to proceed, so we can, we can move this along with whatever adjustments you feel we should do. So sort of as next steps, if you'll see in the timeline, staff would like to host with us as council two, maybe three if needed, what we will call retreats, for lack of a better word, or workshops, where we'll spend some time looking at what we'll call those overarching, large, large milestones of what we'd like to see in the community in 2035. Because the feedback, I think, last time, and logically so, was that we really should spend some time focusing on the big picture. So to help us to get ready for that, what you'll see in that timeline is that staff's going to help by providing some access into some venues of what I would say that the bigger thinkers out in this space, whether that's local, national, or international, are thinking about such things as the future of work, technology, community and land use, if we think about work in different ways, or we think about the importance of art and recreation and all the things we've discussed tonight. And will be able to provide us either access to some speakers and/or some videos to help us in preparation of those retreat topics. So they'll, they'll do that work. Simultaneously, there was the feedback last time that we'd like to be sure we do community surveys and input, so they will work on some of those, all to inform those discussions. And as we discuss, we'll have joint meetings with Planning and Zoning and the ARB and certainly with the community. But to begin with, if you will, some sort of those high-level first steps. The question, I guess, before this group tonight is, does that strategy make sense? Other thoughts or feedback? And based on that, we will ask the staff to move ahead. They did in that memo identify a budget to do some of this work. And again, we'll work at the same time to update the community plan as we go forward. So comments, thoughts, further recommendations?
Kathy, I wonder if, I know that we're bringing in some of our boards later on, but I wonder if this isn't an opportunity maybe even earlier on for the Planning and Zoning Commission, since we're already discussing some of these things, land use and, and they're also, we're having a meeting this Thursday, actually, talking about big picture items. I wonder if the Planning and Zoning Group could not attend at least one of these retreats as an added conversation input. I'm just throwing it out as a, as a topic of discussion. I know that they will be included along the line. I just wonder where is appropriate.
And we sort of went back and forth with this, Jane, because it is a chicken and the egg thing, isn't it, always? But if we're going to have, you know, two, potentially three sort of high-level retreats, I think it makes perfect sense that, that we, that we could certainly do that in one of those. So it wasn't meant to be, all of those were exclusive. I do know the staff would like to have some dedicated time with council to, to do this, but also to incorporate. So I think that, that's easily doable, and I think that makes good sense, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other thoughts or comments or does this like a way forward? So I guess I should have mentioned, so at the end of these first initial steps, then the individual committees that we all discussed last time would then take the pieces and parts, if you will, focusing on those from the high-level decisions and strategies that would impact those particular areas. So the four areas that we talked about were land use, if you remember, quality of life, et cetera, as outlined there. And we figured if we could get the high-level strokes and strategies, then the groups can decide which areas to focus on and others not to spend our time on.
I think it makes very good sense to be organized in this fashion. As we move through it with anything, first time, that we'll probably discover some, you know, changes we'd like to make and having that flexibility is going to be important. But I, I think it's a very logical path moving forward in a really solid way to get things started.
I agree.
I agree as well. Let's do it.
Okay, wagon's ho then, off we go to 2035. Maybe it's a wagon, maybe it's a jet pack, who knows? But we'll head that way. So thank you, Al, and thank you for staff who have worked quite hard. I, I know they're looking forward to partnering with us on this, so it'll be fun. Thank you.
Kathy, it's Homer.
Yeah.
Just wanted to bring back up as a reminder, we had discussed the potential of the World City 2020 conference as being a potential venue that we could use for some inspiration points. If council is interested in participating in that conference, it's the 22nd through the 24th of October. And then with the timeline, in terms of our first meeting, we were looking to have maybe the first meeting after that on maybe November 2nd or 4th. Any thoughts about that?
Maybe, Homer, if you could get us some more details about that conference. He shared those with me and I apologize for not bringing that up. Thank you, Homer. I think there were some fabulous speakers in that conference that I think could, could really provide some of that, you know, what could be next. So if you want to share that with us again, Homer, for everybody, which-
Yeah, I will, I will certainly get the information out to all of you.
That'd be great. Thoughts on that?
I think that sounds great, and I think the timeline feels pretty reasonable.
Yeah, I agree too. I like the idea of bringing in some speakers and I like the idea of a world conference as being a focus. Do you have other speakers that you're thinking of? Any other thoughts on that?
I know, Homer, that the staff have been active looking at different speakers as well. And you know, Jane, we, you know, one of the challenges, of course, you know, meeting in person is a bit of a challenge, but so many of them are doing some of these things virtually now that I think we do have some opportunities that perhaps we couldn't have afforded to do before.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, I'll have to sit back around with Jenny and Deviana to find out if they have any other speakers, you know, potentially lined up. I know there was one that I saw with the ICMA Unite Conference, a guy named Robert Florida that I think some of you may be familiar with. He's worked with the city in the past. That might be one that we take a look at.
Okay, great, thank you. I do want to just take a moment real quick to check in with the clerk's office and Sue on live stream, make sure we didn't have public comment on the 2035 framework.
We did not, we did not.
No, no comments or questions.
I appreciate that. Kathy, I'm not sure what the wagon and ho comment was really relative to, but I'm just going to chalk it up to a Montana ranch girl, and I'm sure that, I'm sure that it was on point. Have to teach me about that at a later date, so. Okay, that brings just the staff comments. So Dana, you want to start with that?
Thank you, only, only two comments. One, just to let you know that we will be having the Neighborhood Association Leadership Meeting on October 27th from 6:30 to 8:00. We'll get more information out to council about that. And then also, we did announce that last week that there will be Trick or Treat, and that'll be October 29th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Of course, we asked everyone to look to our website for information on that, safety tips and so forth, as well as Franklin County Public Health or the Ohio Department of Health relative to the safe conduct of Trick or Treat. And we did that in conjunction with other cities in central Ohio, the Central Ohio Mayor's Managers Association and Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission in setting that date so that we're all sort of on the same sheet of music as much as possible when it came to that. Are there any questions you have of me tonight? That's all I have, thank you.
Hey Dana, did we move that HOA leadership meeting on the calendar for this week? I afforded that to some folks.
Not that I'm aware of. Sue, you want to chime in on that since you guys tend to set that date?
Yes, we never had a date for that meeting until last week. We confirmed the date with Ann and Jane Delgado checking all the calendars. And Vice Mayor DeRosa reached out to me today. She had it on her calendar, so we don't know where that came from.
That, that might have been a previously set date before all this situation hit, so.
Sure, okay. Very good, thank you. Any questions, comments from council on the staff comments? There are none, we'll move on to committee reports. The Development Committee, the Fire Neighborhood Grant Awards. Jenny Roush may have a staff request.
There was a memo included, good evening, a memo included in your packet with the CDC's review and recommendation of the grants that were reviewed. So there was a recommendation of all five of those grants with some minor changes. So with that of council, is an agreement or Mr. Reiner has anything else to add? Staff would recommend that council grant those awards.
No, the committee had no problems with the grants. One of them, they included Bob Griffin for $5,000, Cortona for $5,000, Savona for $4,992, Tartan Ridge for $5,000, and Woods of Indian Run at $4,180. We are under our annual budget. Total grants was $25,837 out of a budget of $32,000. The, I'm sure next month, I think you're going to hear about the second part of the meeting, which had to do with home rentals. So couldn't get that all jammed in tonight, and you'll probably hear our recommendations next month. So if you, I am asking the, the approval of the committee's recommendation- So if you, I am asking the the approval of the committee's recommendation for the five grant awards.
Great. Thanks, John. Did we receive any public comment through the clerk's office? Or are we live streaming?
We have not received any comments.
No comments or questions?
Okay, is there a motion on the floor to accept the recommendations of the committee?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'll second.
All right, I have a tie between you and Kathy. So Anne, you pick. Very good. Anne, would please call the roll?
Sure. Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Ambrose Grooms? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Oh, God, lost the sound.
Back, John.
Yes.
Yes.
Lost the sound here for, sorry.
Mr. Reiner? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, committee reports. Jane, planning and zoning.
Just quickly to let you know, the master sign plan came through for Chase Bank. Chase Bank on the corner of, I think it's Banker Drive and Sawmill, is going to be a beautiful bank with this, the sign package was okayed. And we have this beautiful light blue lighting that's going to create a jewel box effect on that corner with the artwork as a gateway. So I think you'll be pleased at how that turned out. And the Deerfield Country Club is got an okay for their renovation of their outdoor facilities and pickleball courts. And then Arieshire is a 34 family development on the corner of Shire Rings and Cosgrave that was turned, was an informal review. And the feedback primarily from planning and zoning on that was that the density was too much for the area, for the acreage, and also concerns about the use of green space for the public. So that was the feedback for that. And I think it's important that you hear about some of these cases that come through on, and what Planning and Zoning is doing. One of the things that they're doing also this Thursday is it's an administrative review, and we will be talking about property maintenance code update, temporary sign code update, also an informal discussion concerning residential development standards, such as lot size, side yard setbacks, lot coverage and density, which is what I mentioned before, we're already kind of dealing with some of these bigger picture items. And I think these conversations are going to be very rich and full of good points. And it's a good opportunity to bring, have the opportunity to talk to council about what the planning and zoning is dealing with, and what they're actually seeing on the ground as they see these cases. The other, the other administrative informal discussion is concerning special hospital code updates. And that has to do with addressing the uses of zoning and the new trends in medical care facilities. Our code simply speaks about hospitals and medical clinics. But there are quite a few other types of medical uses that are, that have become, you know, more common. And we really don't have a way to address them as we talk about where they're appropriate, near residential, where they, they're, the best uses for these kinds of facilities might be. So, so that's what we'll be discussing. And then the last thing is, it is about time for, or at least once a year, if not twice a year, opportunity for the Planning and Zoning Group, the ARB, and maybe the Board of Zoning Appeals to meet with council. And I'd like to, I'll bring that up at roundtable. But I think we need another opportunity to get all of our heads together to hear what they're dealing with and get council's input and feedback for them as well. So happy to answer any questions about any of this.
Sorry. Thanks, Jane. Appreciate that. Admin Committee, Kathy?
Thank you. I look forward to seeing all of you on Wednesday and as we do our mid year reviews with our clerk and with our city manager. So thank you. See you then.
Great. Community Development Committee, John, I think we've probably heard most of it. But you have anything to add?
No, thank you.
Finance Committee, Christina?
I'm pretty sure you know all about it with the CIP and the budget. So I think we're good to go.
Public Services, Jane?
We have an upcoming meeting. I don't recall the date, though.
Koda, Kathy? Yes, just two quick things. I think some of you have seen the emails go out that service on Koda continues to increase in terms of both frequency and line coverage. So that's good news as the economy begins to roll. So appreciate everybody's hard work. And then the second thing, and this relates to the Public Services Committee discussion about mobility studies. Koda has done several of those, as you know, in Grove City and Westerville and some others. And we're going to meet as a group and talk about lessons learned and things that are learned through the COVID experience as well. So that I think will help us as we think about the future of mobility. So appreciate their partnership and leadership on that. So thanks.
Okay, Mid Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Dana and Megan and I met with Liam Murdoch and some of his staff for our annual check in. We had a nice conversation about all the track funds and the different projects that they have assisted us in getting some funding with. And I really appreciate their partnership. And as you heard, Morpsy came out with the recommendation for Trick or Treat Night. The idea behind that is to get a common night around the community. It's particularly important this year so that certain communities don't get inundated with folks that are not their residents and then have more of a gatherings than they might otherwise have. So appreciate their leadership on that and those conversations. So that's where we are with Morpsy. Logan Union Champagne, Andy?
Nothing to report.
Thirty-three corridor, Kathy, Jane?
Nothing. Thank you.
Arts Council, John, we heard from David tonight. Do you have anything to add?
No, I think he did a great job. And of course, they always do a good job. The Arts Council is amazing. Thank you.
For sure. Word of Education, Greg?
Nothing to report.
Washington Township, Jane?
Let's see, Washington Township, this October 4 through 10 is National Fire Prevention Week. They will not be having open houses at the firehouses this year because of the pandemic. September 27 through October 4 is Light the Night for Fallen Firefighters. The four fire stations here in Dublin will be lit red in honor of firefighters who have died in the line of duty. So that will be going on. And they're, and they are beginning their hydrant maintenance beginning September 30. So all the green hydrants will be, be maintained. So if you have a little problem with some cloudy water, just run it a little bit longer because the firefighters are out cleaning the, taking care of our fire hydrants. That's all.
Thank you. Dublin Bridges will stick with you.
Nothing to report.
Veterans Committee, John?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Friendship Committee, Christina, Andy?
No.
Probably maybe put that one on simmer for a little bit, huh? Complete Count Committee, Christina?
Yes. So I'm pleased to announce that this will be the last time that I will give you a committee report on this sucker, at least for the next 10 years. Dublin did finish out at 83.3%. So that's been pretty great. There is a federal court that's mandated that the census window be extended to October 31 to ensure accuracy. So that means that there may be some enumerators that are still out and about in the month of October, just so that folks know. I really appreciate the committee's work. I have no doubt in my mind that the reason our completion rate is so high is because of the work that the committee has done in engaging with the community. So I very much appreciate all their help. The schools were very helpful as well. They did a public service announcement. So this was truly a full community wide effort. And I can't say enough about how great the work that they did really was to get our community fully counted. So I thank them very much. And as of right now, the state total enumeration is 98.5% complete. So I think our work on the Complete Count Committee is done. And I really appreciate council's support in having such a committee to ensure that our residents all get counted. So thank you.
Right. So you want us to remove the Complete Count Committee from the agenda for and what do you feel about the removing the Friendship Committee?
I think.
Can you leave it on or?
Well, I think we can take it off for the remainder of this calendar year. I think that Andy and Homer and Dana and I were going to kind of revamp. And then the whole pandemic thing hit because we have some ideas about what to do, sort of to mature that committee to the next level, given the things that we accomplished the first couple of years with the committee. So I think you could put that on hold until we are able to kind of meet again to do that revamping that needs to be done.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll start with council roundtable. And I'm just going to go across my computer screen, which brings me to start with John Reiner.
Nothing. Thank you.
Jane Fox?
Just, just to see if we can't talk to staff about scheduling that get together with council, ARB, Board of Zoning Appeals, and Planning and Zoning. If we can do that this fall, I think that would be helpful. Although I do know that we've got a pretty packed schedule. So understand. But I know that they're asking for it. And I think they enjoyed it last year and learned a lot. We learned a lot from each other. And going forward in the 2035 framework plan, it might be, it might be also just good fodder for discussion to to hear some of their thoughts.
That's a good idea.
Jenny Roush, Jenny and Clark can start looking at possible dates for that and come up with one. So I'm sure Jenny and Anne can get some things out to you. And then we can put them on our collective calendars. Very good. Thank you, Greg.
I got nothing to add. I hope everyone has a nice evening.
Christina?
I am good. Thank you.
I'm all set. Thanks.
Kathy?
I just wanted to express my appreciation for Christina for her work on the complete count. That was, that was a lot. And it was, it was appreciated. Quick question for you, Christina, when will we, when will the total numbers be finished and the reports finished? Do you know that those dates?
So the numbers have to be to the president, at least the, the last thing was December 31. But then they've got to do processing throughout the first quarter of the year. So we would not see results till well after that.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. And I also wanted to say thanks to the staff. There was a memo on Spooktacular Alternatives. I know that is like my favorite event of the year. I know Jane likes it, too. She's got great costumes, better costumes. But I appreciate the enumeration of many activities that the staff's going to work with, with everybody around the community and the kiddos, so that we can, we can have some fun in this difficult time. So I just wanted to express appreciation for their work on that. So thanks.
I have nothing further to add, other than to thank you all for your time this evening and your willingness to think critically with me all of the things before us this evening. So with that, I believe we will stand adjourned. Have a great night.